Get our thoughts going. What we might consider. What's on the agenda? I've got some work here. I've got this pretty soon. This looks like it's complicated.
Good. How are you?
Pretty good.
Good.
Walk around that line for a while. Talking about how it's. We're supposed to have a pretty good session on this afternoon. That's the back of. You want to go first?
Hard to lose one.
He's not gonna show up if he's giving his briefcase to everyone?
No, he's here. I just don't know where he's at.
Blizer gone?
Yeah. Have to call Mr. Lee.
What's Bruce Wake though?
Uh, so it's kind of like we're talking about.
Okay.
Oh, that's not good. New pen, I think it's busted.
Why is that clock always faster? Never slower, always faster? I got eight fifty-six. Our official commission clock is actually eight fifty-nine. I still got eight fifty-six.
It is eight fifty-six.
When you enter this room, you enter a alternate.
Oh, there he is.
Thirty seconds left.
You got it.
Did it rain, Sal, the Beulah?
Yes, sir.
Sir.
It did rain. I'm glad you ordered me some.
Okay.
Didn't all get all up, did you?
It wasn't for lack of trying.
Yeah. You could keep the white stuff though.
Yeah.
The white?
Yeah.
We didn't get any of that, no? Not you can have.
Frozen, frozen rain.
All right, nine o'clock by the commission clock. Call this special meeting of the First County Commission's order. Special meeting, we have an agenda here, can't deviate from. First item on the agenda is the election road levy measure.
And I printed off, um, so we did confirm with the Secretary of State's office that we have three months in between. If there was a measure that was not passed to add it to the next ballot. So we can add it to the November ballot if you wish, and this is the, um, verbiage that we got from Beth. The out there in McLean County, which I worked it over with Todd, and he is okay with using that same. We'll just change McLean to that person if you guys are. And if you wanna add it. If we, if it does not pass, then we cannot add it for twelve months. So then it would still be able to add for the list.
The twenty twenty-four primary or general? So, uh, probably didn't ask this question before, but if it say it failed November. And then the next election year it fails in the primary, can we put it on the general again? Or do we have to pick one of those two?
Yeah, that's something that you guys, yeah, we'll have to probably.
Check on, I mean, let's hope it passes and we don't have to worry about it.
Right, because if we have another, you know, primary like we did this year with so little turnout. Do you wanna risk it again, or do you just wanna put it on the general? That's something that we will probably discuss at that time.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns with using? One that was passed? Kinda says the same thing we tried to say, but in a different way, yeah.
Is there an extra copy of that?
We have three mills, don't we?
Pardon?
Doesn't Mercer County have a, uh? Unorganized road? A to secondary? And township road? In our budget, let's see if we have this.
I don't think we got township roads.
Because we're unorganized, yeah.
We don't have townships, so we only have unorganized as you mentioned and, uh.
There are three serpent road levies.
That's what I'm getting at is.
Yep. What their exact names.
County road is ten. That's our max. Unorganized road is eighteen. A to secondary roads is fifteen.
Fifteen, you said?
Yep. So.
Is what?
So we don't have.
Fifteen max.
Yeah.
Is that what we're, oh, okay.
That's our max.
You were telling us what the max is, yeah.
Yep, that's what we're, so when it says, uh? Mercer County currently levies a total of twenty mills for low le- levies, that's not correct. Mercer County has a total of forty-three. Ten of those mills come from farm to market levy. I think the farm to market is the aid to secondary, so that would be not correct.
Well, it's just a different term, yeah.
Right.
What about the numbers?
But it, it says farm to market, so we should say farm to market should be fifteen, not ten.
So fifteen of those mills come from farm to market?
Yep.
Okay.
So you cross off the ten and promptly put fifteen.
And the remaining.
And then we have to say unorganized road, we have eighteen. It's not even listed on this piece of paper.
And do I say the, would you, with the actual max, I just said the forty-three mills for the total? Would, does the county actually levy that much?
We're not talking about that right now, Neil.
That's, that's what it says. Mercer County currently levies a total of.
Okay, Mercer County currently has the ability to levy.
Right.
Thank you. Forty-three mills for road levies. Ten of these mills come from farm to market.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, right?
Yep, that's what you, we were just.
Eighteen mills, I'm gonna cross off ten and put down eighteen mills. Unorganized road? Uh, wait, we can leave ten mills is for the county road.
Yeah.
Leave that there. Then after that period where it says levy, then we have unorganized road. Is eighteen mills.
Instead of twenty, right?
No, I'll just read the whole thing all over.
Okay.
Mercer County currently has the ability to levy a total of forty-three mills. Ten of those mills come farm to market. Which is expiring. Or fifteen of those mills. And the remaining eighteen and. I'm gonna cross off their. And eighteen mills is the general county road. And co- unorganized road is eighteen mills. That's the very first sentence. And it says in order to maintain an up to twenty-mill road levy, no, we don't have, we have forty-three. This whole thing doesn't really work.
I mean, if we had just adjusted the, the mills to our mills.
It still, this doesn't really. Given the farm to market levy of fifteen mills. No, it is not.
Yeah, they call it farm to market. What do we call it? Is that?
A to secondary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, given the farm to market of, it says ten, that has to be crossed out and put down fifteen. Is expiring. Should Mercer County Commissioners have authority to level up to? Twenty mills. In the county road and bridge fund. That's not correct. County road and bridge is eighteen. Now I gotta go back. This thing is hard to read. I'm gonna go read what we put in ours. First time when we had this. He gave that to me and I had it right in front of me just a second ago. What we typed into our ad. It's right here. We want to obtain an additional ten mills for county road and bridges. Wait a second.
So much for easy, right?
Yeah. You're gonna have to. You don't have that century code with me, and I do too, Heather.
For our levy limitations?
Yeah.
I've got it right here.
Is the county road ten? Unorganized road eighteen, oh no.
Farm to market and federal aid roads levy established by bu- budget under N E C C twenty-four dash oh five dash oh one. So.
What page you on, what page you on?
Three.
Okay.
Repealed by twenty fifteen, uh, twenty-one forty-four. However, if a voter approved levy was authorized before January first of twenty fifteen, it remains in effect for up to ten tax years under provisions of law in effect at the time it was approved. So we approved the fifteen? Is what you're saying that that passed on?
I don't think we're even, I don't think that's the one that's going away.
This county road and bridge is only ten mills.
Fifty-seven fifteen, that's what I'm looking for. See if I have that here. Fifty-seven fifteen oh six point seven, okay. Number five. Okay, county living attacks for county roads and, this here is fifty-seven fifteen dash six point seven. That's what, that's the one that we put in the paper. It says a county living attacks to establish and maintain, no, a county living attacks for a county, oh, where the heck am I at here?
Was it number five or?
Yes, number five. Yep, it should've been, I was in the wrong spot. The county living attacks for county roads and bridges as provided in twenty-four oh five oh one, not to exceed ten mills. So it's county roads and bridges. County roads and bridges is which one of those?
County roads and bridges not to exceed ten?
Well, we have on our budget. Eighteen. What's going on there?
What page, page is that on the budget sheet?
Well, you're saying what we have on our budget, well, we gotta.
That's unorganized roads. The reason I looked on the budget, that's, she hasn't stated what is the max that our county can do. That's the only reason I looked for that.
Okay.
That's, that's all I was looking for.
And that's county roads and bridges is ten?
Ten mills of those to farm to market, we have fifteen. And that's the one that Samantha just got done reading, right? We have fifteen, okay. Which is expiring. Okay. That makes sense.
The farm to market is expiring.
Yep, and that's aid to secondary roads.
That's aid to secondary roads.
That's what causes all the problems, is this changing of names. Okay, so that's the one that's going away.
And what's the maximum on aid to secondary?
That was the fifteen.
At the current?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And that is going away?
Yep. We need to make a copy of this so you guys can read it, because something is right here. And I, it's not catching, I'm not catching it. Would you mind?
So on their, um, this one we're reading from McLean County, it says that. The ten of those mills come from farm to market.
See, they must only mill.
We have fifteen.
And we mill fifteen, they only levy ten.
They only have ten, we have fifteen.
And that's expiring.
And that, right.
So right now we have forty-three total mills. Which are a combination of county road, unorganized, and aid to secondary.
Correct, correct.
And the aid to secondary.
Is the one that's expiring.
Right, as per, not to go to century code. So we have to be able to roll that over into the county road. Correct?
Yeah, we wanna increase the county road.
Combine it, so we, we tech, tech. For lack of fancy words, we wanna combine county road and aid to secondary roads.
Say that again, Gene?
We want to combine the county road and, or roll the aid to secondary roads into just the county road.
Yes, we want to increase county road to overcome the loss.
Right, we wanna, but see, that's the play with words that confuse people. Cause then they say, well, you wanna increase county road, well, we want to, we have to merge the aid to secondary into the county road.
Maintain or merge, yes.
Yeah, maintain or merge, so right now, those two together are twenty-five mills.
But we can only.
Oh, additional ten.
Yeah.
Yes, we're gonna lose five.
We're gonna automatically.
Lose five, right.
I wanna back you up, please.
Go ahead.
If, this is what we put in the paper last, on the ballot.
Okay.
And it refers to. Number five, right there. It refers to century code fifty-seven fifteen six point seven, number five. If you read that, the county living, county is, may levy, not to exceed ten mills. Our county road and bridge is already eighteen.
No, that's unorganized, it's eighteen.
That's unorganized. Our county roads are at ten.
Okay, that's what helped, was wrong. When authorized, we can add another ten mills.
Right, cause it says not exceeding a combined additional rate of twenty mills, so twenty is your max.
Okay. Now if you go and read twenty-four. Oh five oh one. We might have to go get that. When we ask for an additional ten mills. We have to give twenty percent of that to the cities. So we only gonna get eight mills. So we're losing fifteen. We're only gonna gain eight, essentially. It isn't, it isn't gonna be enough if we're, if we already have our budget.
So we can't exceed anything past that.
I think that's why we have to read twenty-four oh five oh one. The answer is yes, we can, we can go up to thirty mills.
Right, that was my understanding.
We, we have, we have ten. We can ask, this, and I have the letter from Jessica Binder, we have, we can add ten. Of that, of the second ten, we only get, we have to give twenty percent to the cities.
Wait just a minute, of that second ten, we need, we need voter approval.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, yeah.
We, we can add ten with voter approval.
Right.
We can add an additional, I'm gonna say the first ten. We have ten, we can add the first ten with voter approval.
Yes.
Twenty percent has to go to the cities. And then we can add.
We.
A second additional ten, up to a maximum of thirty, and not, all of that goes to the county.
And here's something.
That's my understanding.
Think about though with that, I mean, it already did not pass on the, on the primary. So now you're gonna change it again and ask for even more than what was asked for on the primary?
I'm saying we need to be cognizant of that, understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean.
If, if we're budgeting. And we're using up all of our mills, asking for eight isn't gonna be enough to cut our, meet our budget, we're gonna have to cut our budget.
But that's what you guys had kind of approved for the first ballot, was the twenty, so I.
Right.
I guess I'm concerned with why you're asking for more.
He's not necessarily, he's not, he's informing.
I'm not asking, I'm just informing.
Okay, yeah, okay, I.
I'm not asking for any.
Right, and if you look at number five, that, and, and I read, read that wrong, it said not exceeding a combined additional tax rate of twenty mills. That's where you get the maximum of thirty. So ten we have.
Yes.
Asking for another ten. We could ask for twenty, but we're only asking for ten at this point.
We're, we're only asking for ten of the voters.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Which, correct.
Yeah.
So, so are we all understanding what's going on here? I just want you guys cognizant that we're gonna ask for ten additional. Essentially, our budget's only gonna go up eight.
Only get eight.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I follow that, but we need the voters to authorize the ten so we can even get the additional.
Okay. Ten. Okay, so now let's go to the paper, so what I, okay. What I offered the board, and we kind of talked about, was we need to educate the public in what we're doing. So they understand that we're losing fifteen, but we're, we need to try to offset that by asking for an additional ten. So we have to educate them so the ballot doesn't fail. So we considered possibly putting something in the paper. So that's what I gave you this paper for, just for a, okay, first I ask for, do we wanna pursue that? Prior to changing the word on the ballot, which we have to do. Do we want to put something in the paper to help educate the public on why we're putting that in the ballot?
I would say absolutely. Oh yeah, we need to.
Okay, so if we absolutely have to do that, I gave you guys a piece of paper. So it looks like this, Gene?
Mm-hmm.
That's just an idea. So do we wanna talk about the ad in the paper right now, or do we wanna talk about the wording on the ballot? Which way do you guys wanna go?
I think we should figure out the wording on the ballot.
Okay.
And, I, I mean, I think we can use McLean's as a template. But we're gonna have to change kind of what we were going through, so. Mercer County currently has the ability to level a total of forty-three mills for road levies.
Okay, it's just. Right there. Why do we say we have the ability to level forty-three? Are those the maximums of all those?
Those are the maximums. That's why you have the ability. We're not saying that that's what we're doing, but we have the ability to.
Okay.
And then.
Can we, let me ask you some tricks. Mercer County currently has the ability to levy a maximum. Total of forty-three mills.
Yeah.
Do we wanna say that?
Sure.
Yeah, a maximum.
Mercer County currently has the ability to levy a maximum. Of forty-three mills.
Okay, that's the first sentence.
Okay.
Then, the way ours is fifteen of those mills come from aid to secondary levy.
I would like you, that, that's what we're gonna put in there?
Well, that's, that's how we refer to it.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, but I agree with you.
Yep, instead of farm to market, it's aid to secondary, as in our, okay?
What's the confusing, I agree with you. We need to follow what we have on our deal. The, what's gonna be confusing, if somebody looks this up on century code, it's gonna say farm to market, it's not gonna say aid to secondary.
And when I've talked to all the authors and with Linda from the Association of Counties, they all. Refer to it as farm to market, so.
So could we do, could we, I was just gonna say, could we do farm to market and then in parentheses?
Yes.
Aid to secondary.
Yeah.
Yes, that's.
Cause the old timers.
Let, let me say that. Can we put in parentheses?
Yep, yep.
That's exactly what my thought was, yep, put in, in.
Continue.
Yep, which is expiring. And then the remaining.
No, no, it'd say remaining, and eighteen mills.
Okay, and then eighteen mills to un- unorganized.
No.
Right?
Eighteen mills is a general fund, a general road and bridge levy, that's correct. Just cross off ten and put the word eighteen.
Well, that's.
No.
And eighteen mills.
But ten is the general county road levy.
Yeah, ten is the general county.
Yeah.
I, I think we have to take out, well, so we have to split it saying, there's a, there's ten mills is the general county and road levy. And then we have to add in eighteen mills is our unorganized roads, mill levy.
Okay, the, the difference here is, in the first sentence, we're saying what the maximum is that we can levy.
Yep.
And then we're talking about the amounts that we are levying.
We're gonna, we, we break it down to what we are levying currently.
Right, so because then if you say fifteen of those mills come from aid to se- or farm to market, i.e. aid to secondary roads, well. Is the fifteen the maximum, or is the fifteen what we're levying right now?
We're referring to the maximum in the first sentence, so that, we're trying to explain where that forty-three comes from.
Exactly.
So it should be.
So we have to say either, if we're explaining the forty-three, then in our next. We can't say what we are levying, we have to mention what we can levy.
So what you're saying is fifteen is our maximum? Mill levy from farm to market?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, I mean, we can say in there of, of which we are levying, how much?
I don't think we wanna.
Go there.
Muddy the water with what we are doing.
Okay.
We just wanna say, we stay, stick with what we have the ability to.
Okay. And now that I'm all confused. Where are we with the sec, with the second sentence?
We've gotten to the point where farm to market is expiring.
Okay.
And then. I don't know if we put the word remaining in there, or if we just see the. County road and, the general county road and bridge levy is ten.
Can I offer an idea?
Mm-hmm.
For the time being, we're explaining the forty-three mills.
Yep.
So let's just, for the time being, cross off, or don't say which is expiring. Fifteen mills is from farm to market, aid to secondary. Eighteen mills is county road. And bridge.
Eighteen is the unorganized. Ten is the county road.
Ten is county road.
Yep.
Eighteen is unorganized.
Yep.
Now we'll say. Farm to market. Market. Levy. Is going away.
Is expiring.
Is expiring. Now we've explained forty-three.
Yep.
Now we're starting, what are we gonna do?
Right.
In what, so. Farm to market levy is, is expiring. Mercer County. Requests. Ability to raise. Which one are we raising?
The county road.
So we explain that fifteen of the mills come from the farm to market.
Yep.
Ten for, for general road and eighteen for unorganized road.
Correct.
Now we, I would say then we should say, now currently we level levy, level levy. Um, ten, no, what do we currently?
We're going, we're going right back to what we want, what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
And that's what, we just got done saying that we don't wanna go there. Can I finish reading what I got, see if it fills what you got?
Yep, 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 yep.
But we, we kinda said that.
Okay.
The story gets too big maybe. Okay. Farm to market is expiring. Mercer County requests ability to raise county road and bridge ten mills. To, what's the word, Gene? To overcome the loss of fifteen mills. How do we say that? Mercer County requests ability to raise county road and bridge ten mills to. I'll just write down offset, that's the wrong word, but. Loss. Of the fifteen mills.
Or to compensate.
Or, she got, I'll use their.
Nope, don't use compensate.
Okay.
Mercer County, I'll use their last word here. Mercer County Commissioners have the authority to levy up to twenty mills. No, don't wanna do all that. I think that's the answer right there. I'll just read the whole thing.
Okay.
Mercer County currently has the ability to levy a maximum of forty-three mills for road levies. Fifteen mills is from farm to market, ten is from county road and bridge, eighteen is unorganized. Farm to market is expiring. Le, farm to market levy is expiring. We lose fifteen mills. Mercer County requests ability to raise county road and bridge ten mills to offset the loss of these fifteen mills.
And then we would say pursuant to NDCC chapter.
Absolutely.
Yeah, at the end of it.
It's, it's pretty brief.
Because the, the farm to market expiring one, that's where. It's. It's ending due to North Dakota Century Code.
Yep.
Yep.
So expiring is.
We, we can put down expiring per, in North Dakota Century Code.
That I.
That would.
Is, yeah, I like that better than just saying expiring.
Yeah.
Because expiring means you put.
It wasn't our.
You put funds into an account, and now that we've meant that, so we no longer need it, but no, this, this isn't.
That wasn't our case.
It's changing due to North Dakota Century Code. We can't levy it that way anymore. We have to combine it.
Farm to market levy is expiring per North Dakota Century Code. Now we should put on it at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
That's what. That would be good. Per Century Code twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four. At the law.
Now, now we're, I'm, I'm, yeah. We're getting someplace.
December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Mercer County requests ability to raise county road and bridge ten mills to offset the loss of fifteen mills. This. Increase. Of ten mills. For county road and bridge. To maintain county road. Effective.
Yep.
One, one twenty twenty-five.
Right, the increase. In the county road is not an in, an overall increase. It's just.
No, it's decreasing.
Right, it's, it's merging of the two.
And we're decreasing.
Into one.
And we decrease five mills, right?
Right, the authority of five mills.
Yeah, the ability of five more mills. So it's.
Well, hopefully that message gets out there.
Well, okay, I just wanna show you or explain more about, and Mercer County currently levies a total of twenty-three.
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Mills for road levies. Oh, yeah, there we go.
Has the ability.
Yeah.
To levy a maximum forty-three mills for road levies.
Take out the word currently.
Has the ability to levy. A total of forty-three mills for road levies.
A maximum of forty-three mills. Mercer County has the ability to levy a maximum. Of forty-three mills for road levies.
Did you take out the word currently?
Yep.
Yes.
I added it next.
Mercer County has the ability to levy a maximum of forty-three mills for road levies. Fifteen of those mills come from the farm to market. Secondary aid levy, which is expiring. Ten mills.
Oh, take off which is expiring.
Yeah. So it just be period, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Ten mills is the general county road and bridge levy and eighteen unorganized levy. In order to maintain.
Unorganized road.
Unorganized. Okay, and then someone's gonna have to need.
Okay.
In order to maintain.
Well, I'll just start with.
Okay.
Farm to market levy. Is expiring. Twelve. Dash thirty-one. Dash twenty twenty-four. Per NDCC. Which we cannot abbreviate, by the way. We have to type it out, but.
Twelve twenty-four, twelve what?
Thirty-one.
December thirty-first to twenty twenty-four.
Yep.
Yeah.
Next sentence. Ready with that one?
After twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four?
Yep, per North Dakota Century Code.
Okay.
We lose fifteen mills. Period. Mercer County. Requests ability to raise county road and bridge. Levy. By ten mills. To offset loss. Of the fifteen mills. This increase of ten mills. For county road and bridge. Effective. One, one. Twenty twenty-five. That tells us that we're not raising the taxes until we absolutely have to, which might help a lot.
Right, as long as we explain in there that we're not adding mills.
Yep.
The, the current state statute. Mandates that we can no longer you, do that. What is it? Aid to secondary road levy, so we have to combine it.
Do we wanna print that and have everybody have a hand copy so they can stare at it?
Do we have to add in that the, um.
In pursuant?
In pursuant to the NDCC chapter fifty-seven fifteen six.
Sure.
Yeah.
Is that just, uh, comma after the one one twenty twenty-five? The V A, the increase of ten mills for county aid, for county road and bridge is effective one one twenty twenty-five?
No, that's not where I would insert it.
Where, where would you put it?
Okay.
And then don't we need to put something about having majority vote is required?
Okay, where it says per, I'm sorry.
At, at the end, yeah.
Where it says, uh, farm to market levy is, is expiring per North Dakota Century Code, that's where you would like, write it down.
Do you need the century code? Do you need to reference the century code twice? One time in regards to why it is the, the one fund is expiring and one time.
Well, the first time we're referencing it is the century code that gets rid of farm to market. The second time we reference the century code is to say, this is the code that allows us to give the hand.
And that's exactly what I have sent us with the second one. Where is that going?
Yeah.
I go to the first one. Is it back from that? Where is that second?
So where we said per North Dakota Century Code, we wanna write down that century code there, right?
Yeah.
Fifty-seven. Dash fifteen dash zero six point seven. Parenthesis five. Now, where would you add Travis?
I, I just put a majority vote is required in pursuant to NDCC chapter fifty-seven dash fifteen dash zero six point seven five.
Yeah, that would work.
At the end.
Yep. And then you'd have to have the yes and the no after the paragraph's done.
So is it a majority vote is required?
I think we'll have her print that and give us each a copy.
Yeah, I just wanna read it aloud again before we go into that.
To see if it sounds confusing.
Well, I'll just put it all together.
No, it's.
Mercer County has the ability to levy a maximum of forty-three mills for road levies. Fifteen of those mills come from the farm to market or aid to secondary levy. Ten mills is the general county road and bridge levy and eighteen unorganized road levy. Farm to market levy is expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four per North Dakota Century Code. We lose fifteen mills. Mercer County requests to raise county road and bridge levy to ten mills, which.
To offset.
To offset.
Offset the loss of the.
To offset.
The loss.
Of ten mills.
The loss of fifteen mills.
Loss of fifteen, yeah.
The loss.
Of fifteen mills.
Okay, we lose fifteen mills. Mercer County requests to raise county road and bridge levy to ten mills to offset the loss of fifteen mills.
It should say additional ten mills. Because it's already at ten. If you say to levy ten, it's like we're not changing anything. So you'd have to.
Mercer County requests to raise county road and bridge levy to.
An additional ten mills. I like Travis.
An additional.
Ten mills, yep. That makes sense then.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mercer County requests to raise county road and bridge levy to an additional ten mills to offset the loss of fifteen mills. This increase of ten mills for county, for the county road and bridge levy affected one zero one twenty twenty-five.
Okay, instead of where you said of ten mills, to raise additional county road and bridges, you should say by ten mills.
The increase by ten mills?
Yep.
The increase by ten mills for the county road and bridge levy?
No, wrong place.
Okay.
Mercer County requests the ability to raise county road and bridge by ten mills to offset the loss of fifteen mills.
By additional ten mills?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Mercer County requests to raise county road and bridge levy by addition, additional ten mills to offset the loss of fifteen mills. This increase. Do you want by there as well? This increase by ten mills for the county road and bridge levy effective one zero one twenty twenty-five?
Of ten bills should be there, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah. This increase of ten bills, yeah.
Yeah.
This increase of ten mills for the county road and bridge levy effective one zero one twenty twenty-five. You guys like that sentence?
We gotta word it so.
It says this increase of ten bills is for county road and bridge to be effective, if you want, you know.
This increase of ten mills for the county road and bridge levy effective one zero.
To become effective. Is to become effective.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Is, will be effective, will become effective, is effective.
Will become effective.
Yeah. It's all of.
Yep.
However, yeah, however, you worded that part really.
The story doesn't be funky.
I just, when I'm saying it out loud, it's like.
It is.
This increase of ten mills for the county road and bridge levy will become effective one zero one twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
A majority vote is required in pursuant of NDCC chapter fifty-seven dash fifteen dash zero six point seven.
Yep.
Okay.
I just keep. As long, I try to listen to it as if we can understand it.
Well, that's right, because the law, you know, everybody was reading it, it's gonna.
We gotta also, you know, word it so it doesn't sound like we're trying to hide something, like we're trying to sneak some mills through.
Right.
Which we're not.
So then the yes means you were in favor of, of levy authority up to, do we need to change that from twenty mills then?
To what?
What's that gonna be now in total, since we're on lose?
Now, that will give us, if, if it's worded right, that gives us.
Yes means you're in favor, I'm sorry.
Yes means that we would be able to.
We're not changing that because it is the twenty mills for the road and bridge, because we're going from ten to one.
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Yep. Because we need the voter approval for those second ten mills.
Explain why we're. Forty-three mills, then, you know, ten mills here, ten mills there, eighteen mills does this.
Cross that bridge, when we get there.
Too far down the road, either. And I'm not a people guy.
Lot of play with words there, cross the bridge down the road when we get there.
I'm just discussing something. You know, a lot of this action is way in the end of the paragraph. And I think that action should be first line or two. Now, you're, you're an editor. What jumps out at people right? I mean, they'll read two lines or so and then they go, well, what the heck?
Well, that's my, honestly, my thought on this is, um, you, the, the, the actual. wording of the measure should be as brief as you can possibly make it. I think the longer you make it, the less chance.
And it should.
The information needs to come through, I, I'll, I'll find a, an editorial as well, urgent support. You said you might take out. Uh, information in, in the, the paper. That's where you get some of that information out, but I think you want to. I mean, this could, this could probably work, but I don't think you want anything more. You wanna make that, that measure concise.
Wayne's thought is, do you put the action up front and then the explanation on the bottom?
Yeah. So it, I mean.
That kind of makes sense, but in that case, I always wonder if you want the explanation in the measure. I mean.
We have to. Because they, you know, they go to vote, they're kind of in a hurry probably, and they read the first two lines maybe, and they go, wow, wow. I think we're overthinking it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We might be.
Being where we're going looks pretty good. You know.
I mean, as. As we discussed this and talking about overthinking it. Or, or, you know, for the sake of discussion, are we. Making it the language too much here? Do we need, or should we just say in order to maintain the current. Level. That Nor- in or, North Dakota Sentry Code says, we can no longer levy for aid to secondary roads, and in order to maintain our current, um, levy, we need, we need to be able to levy this, but we need approval from the voter. I don't, I don't know how to reword that, even my, what I just said is confusing to myself, but we need to.
And.
Relay that to the voters, that we're losing the ability to do one, but we need to combine them into the other.
But we also, I think, are gonna need thoughts.
Absolutely. I do have a copy of that twenty-four oh-one that says, uh, you can add another ten. That where twenty percent must be turned over to the cities. I don't know if you want a copy of that? It's just right there, it's twenty-four five oh-one.
It's not on this other one that you have, you print off?
No.
Okay.
And I guess.
Yeah, I don't think we need to add that in here.
No.
No, because we just need to.
It's just for your information.
Yeah, we just need to let the voters know why we need to change one, because we're losing the other. And we're not, it's kind of.
You almost.
A play with words, you know, what they're forcing us to do is, we can't.
Could go down to farm.
Levy that.
Farm and market road.
You guys, let's.
Levy and put that all the way up to the top.
When you read this, when you read all this stuff, let's just say you cross out the top three lines, I'm just assuming, just cross, don't even use them.
Right.
Okay.
Farm to market levy is expiring, blah, 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 we lose fifteen mils. Mercer County requests the ability to raise additional ten mils to offset this loss of fifteen mils.
Yep.
We wouldn't need those top three sentences at all.
Nope, nope, nope.
Personally, as I can wish, I say, that's, that's exactly the kind of thing I.
Yep.
Another thing that, you know, we can do is just put.
And then.
More of this information in the paper.
Exactly, so I, I think you still want all that top information, you just don't want it in the.
In the measure.
Right.
Written in the paper.
Yep. Just cross out the top three lines, start the whole thing where it says farm.
Farm to market, yeah.
Yeah.
That would make, that way it jumps right out and it says what's going on.
Yep, while you were out, we already, I met, we made an amendment already. The entire first.
The entire.
Three sentences, the entire first three sentences, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
We would start at farm-to-market levy is expiring.
Yep.
And it's just a.
That also removes the confusion of, is this how much our levy, or is this how much can levy?
Cause these.
Yeah, that.
The normal, the normal public don't know this type of thing.
You can outline all of that.
That's why I want it in front of me, when I see it, visualize it better.
So we're starting at farm-to-market levy is expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four per North Dakota Sentry Code.
Yep.
Yep.
We lose fifteen mils. Mercer County requests to raise county road and bridge levy by additional ten mils to offset the loss of fif- of fifteen mils. This increase of ten mils for the county road and bridge, I forgot the. For the county road and bridge levy will become effective one zero one twenty twenty-five. A majority vote is required in pursuant to NDCC Chapter fifty-seven dash fifteen dash oh-six point seven five.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yep.
Keep it simple, stupid.
Keep it, yep.
Well, after all that.
Trying to do, yep.
But that's what we need, we can't.
Right.
Convoluted it.
Con, right.
Right, so, is there a motion to accept the updated wording, um, with the blessing of the state's, of the state's attorney?
I move that we approve the. Ballot measure wording as presented, contingent upon approval of our county attorney.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any discussion?
Oh, yeah, that, that's what I was heading for, thank you, I mean, that, that's straight and forward, and it doesn't convolute things, and, and, uh, that, that I think that's very good. Straight, like you said, straight and forward and.
I agree.
Gets to the point.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Hi.
Gene?
Hi.
Wayne?
I vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Next thing is, do we want to put something in the paper, and I think we've all agreed that we do, yes, no?
Yep.
Okay, what did, what did our editor say he's going to do in a editorial?
I'm thinking I will, I don't know my name, I don't know if I want to do that quite yet, but I can, and I'm just saying, you know, in that, in there and in whatever you guys take out, then you can kind of expand in those places a little more, if you want to be explaining, this is how many bills we can levy, and this is, that, that would be the place.
So, wait until after your editorial, is that what you're saying?
No, it's all, that's up to you, if they're separate, if you separate them.
I would, I would time it, uh.
Two or three weeks.
Well, I would say I would time it right when the absentee ballots go out, and then probably again.
I'd say twice, I agree.
And then shortly before the actual.
Yep.
Election. So we'd have, we'd have another meeting to decide what we wanna put in, because absentee ballots come out, what, mid-September, Samantha?
About September ninth, I was.
We send out absentee val- uh, applications September twenty-sixth.
Oh, that late?
Okay, that's the applications, and then the ballots would come out like a week or two after that, so beginning of October? Okay.
We have to have this measure, the deadline to have this measure added to the ballot is May third.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is.
Shortly.
Shortly, yeah.
Yep, right there.
So we've approved it today, so it can be sent in?
I can have it.
Yep.
If.
After.
After Todd reviews, yeah. Yep.
So we agree, we want to put it, add in the paper, and what times were you suggesting?
Uh, I wanted it to hit pretty much when absentee, um, ballots would come out, so that would probably be that first week of October.
October fifth?
Well, the paper, yeah, the paper would come out the fifth or sixth.
Thursday deadline, dead date line.
Right.
So what is the Thursday, the first Thursday in October?
The sixth.
The sixth. But, well, if we. If we submit it to you on the twenty-ninth, then it'll be that first.
Right, so that, that would be before, and it, can I buy you this ask, cause I can let people know, but are you, is this something you're only looking at putting in the county paper, or are you looking at having that in the B P N star?
Both.
Both, yeah, and probably the dollar receiver too.
Okay.
So if we're gonna do it twice, when would you put the second at?
Um, I would do that, um, the November third one. Because that would be the week before the election, that would be your.
When do they, when do they?
Election is November eighth, so we want it this week?
It would come out that week.
So we'll run it.
See, I would move everything up a whole week, because the absentee ballots are gonna be in here before that. We want to get it a week before the absentees and then a week after that.
So we'll put it in here.
When did the absentee ballots go out, twenty-sixth?
Applications.
Applications.
Yeah, so people will start.
Reading, yeah.
They'll send those back and we'll get.
And then you send those out as soon as you get them back?
Yep.
Okay, so they could be going out as soon as the twenty-ninth, thirtieth?
They could be voting by the seventh.
Right, so if we do another, run another paper for this week, that kind of splits it and gives people some time.
I'd like to have one in the, in the paper before people are able to vote on the absentee ballots.
So that would be the September twenty-ninth paper?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to, well, our deadline will be the twenty-second.
Right.
So the October sixth, I was talking about earlier, maybe that's September twenty-ninth?
Yep.
For that first.
For the first publication, and then what week in October are you thinking, Marv?
Thought, you said November third.
Well, I mean, cause that was, that would be the last paper before people actually vote in person.
You picked one, I picked one.
Yeah, I would, I would say the November third paper, because that's gonna be your last.
Yep.
Um, thing before people that vote in person.
It's fresh, it is fresh.
It's fresh.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so October twenty-seventh is when I need to get it to.
And that wording we'll discuss at the next meeting, you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. And then we can even finalize our dates at that meeting too.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Yeah.
We can make changes if we need to, it's just. We're, we're, we're trying to decide to hit it twice, when to hit it.
So our September seventh meeting, we can. You can take motions for the actual dates and.
Yeah.
We just add it.
Right, add it on the agenda or whatever.
Yeah, put it on the agenda so we can do it formally on the seventh.
That's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, cause.
Okay.
We're just talking about the measure, now we're talking about stuff that's not really on the agenda, so we should probably do it on the seventh. Good catch, Gene.
So, what I'm gonna ask the board. Is to review what I wrote down, not in saying that that needs to be used, but it gives you an idea, but come back each of us with an idea.
Yep.
So we're prepared.
Okay. Let's move on in the agenda here, um, we have combined positions and how we wanna, um, do that going forward. Um, I had a conference call with Samantha and Todd, was that Monday or Tuesday? Recently, Monday, so, based on what Todd said, um, what we've done in the past isn't illegal, however, it's confusing. And there has been some correspondence with the state PERS department, and it's not something that they're used to seeing either. So the preferred method around the state is to have it combined into an hourly wage, and they would receive retirement on their entire wage. It's a preferred method, so. And that's kind of what I was alluding to at the last meeting, but I wanted to have that verification.
Yeah, and then, so I printed off a copy of kind of what Todd was going, referencing from PERS, so the information that we've got from PERS on how they, how it kind of shows, how it's broken down into working full-time, part-time, or.
Okay, so then is the, the weighted question in the room, if we combine the land use and tax director, then the salary?
So the way we're doing it now, we have an hourly rate for one position.
Correct.
And then we do a set salary on the other. And, and we do it both for risk management, and we do it for.
Administrator, land use administrator.
Land use administrator, so, um. We'll, we'll start with Cindy's, so the salary on that, what was that amount, it was a thousand something, right?
Thousand ninety-five.
Thousand ninety-five, and that's per month.
Thousand ninety-five for which position?
Land use administrator.
Land use. Okay.
Asking that, so it's.
Yep.
Public knowledge here.
The tax director's salary was sixty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six seventy-eight per year.
Sixty-one.
Thousand nine thirty-six point seven eight.
Okay. So if we do the sixty-one nine thirty-six seventy-eight.
Plus thirteen one forty-nine eighty-four.
Before we get there, I just wanna, so two thousand eighty is a standard.
Hourly rate.
Hourly, annual, so that would be twenty-nine seventy-eight per hour. And then if you do the ten ninety-five per month times twelve months, that's thirteen one forty divided by the two thousand eighty. That's an additional six thirty-two per hour. There's, there's some fractional cents, I'm just rounding up to the nearest penny. So.
Let me.
Go ahead.
My math is different than that.
Okay.
I, I did the total sum, did a different way to go there.
Okay.
Tax director total salary for a year is sixty-one thousand nine thirty-six point seven eight.
Okay, okay.
What?
No, it's seventy-five thousand something.
Just for the budget?
Yeah, I mean, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Currently?
Uh, let's look on twenty-twenty-two's budget, I don't see that.
Okay, what, what is your current salary for tax director?
You have to look at the second page, that's only one page.
Okay, tell me what it is, or tell us, please.
Well, I don't know my second page, but you take the thousand ninety-five eighty-two times twelve.
Okay, I haven't done that part yet.
Yep, but he's getting to that, so.
The tax, tax director is sixty-one nine thirty-six point seven eight.
Okay.
Land use administrator is thirteen thousand one forty-nine point eighty-four. Add those two together, it comes to seventy-five thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
Okay.
You divide that by twenty-eighty, it comes out to thirty-six dollars and ten cents an hour.
Thirty-six, ten?
Per hour, yes.
Yep, okay. And I think if you did the math on mine, that comes out to, yep, the exact same.
Okay, so that's where we're at, thirty-six, ten an hour.
Okay.
What's seventy?
Go ahead.
Seventy, seventy-five what?
Seventy-five thousand oh eighty-six point six two. Okay.
I guess I'm just gonna, do you mind if I?
Continue, Mark.
When I take the thirty-six, ten an hour, okay, first we're gonna decide if we're gonna combine them, and I, I'll tell you where I'm at on that. I agree that we should combine them, I think it'd make everything simple and straightforward. I do not believe it should be retroactive, it should be effective this date. That's, that's my personal opinion, so I'm basing all my information on that. For the Tanya Wyler table that I have, which is a twenty-step program, this puts this person at step thirteen on the twenty-step program. The county adopted, I wasn't here, I got this from Shanna, county adopted a table, a ten-step program. In twenty-sixteen. The thirty-six, ten, that puts her at step twelve. She's actually over the top on the ten years. So.
But, the question is, Marv, that you're, you're looking at two positions, and this says, it doesn't say tax director and land use administrator. It says tax director, period. So she, she has another position, and you're combining those salaries. As one, and the, what Tammy, I believe, has here is strictly just for the tax director only. So if you'd be looking at that for the tax director, director only, she's not up at ten or twelve years.
I want to ask a question, so is one of the concerns here that one of these was not paying into PERS?
Correct.
It wasn't.
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
Um, so a question I have.
Is that the same with risk management or?
Yep.
Building means and risk management, one of them is not, okay.
Yeah, so a question I have, for the thousand ninety-five, has that been increasing with raises, or has that held constant?
I started out at a thousand, um, twenty, and now I'm at a thousand ninety-five, so. I don't know how they've been figuring it, but not quite, it must be, um, partial with raises not, and I suppose they haven't been doing it quite with the raises, cause then I'd be getting double the raises, but it's.
Right.
Fractionally, yeah. Cause it can't be, it can't be the whole raise, but partially.
It's been increasing every year.
A little bit, a little bit, but not the whole thing, cause they've only went up seventy-five dollars in five year, four year, four and a half year.
What, what I'm getting at is, so if we, if we combine these, which I'm in favor of, for regardless of who it is. Do we hold the additional position as a set rate? And raise the base, which is the, the tax director? Or if it's combined, then you just increase it, but you know there's two components of it. What I'm getting at is in the future.
Right.
If somebody else comes into that position, and maybe they don't do the land use administrator, maybe they're just the tax director, so.
Well, we would address that at that time.
So I've spoken with other county auditors, and their tax director or tax assessor does do it all. And so it's just included in their position, the land use.
Okay.
I agree that if we combine this,
NGIS.
We do it just the way Samantha's just said.
Okay.
Is regarded as one position from this point forward.
Do I have a, or email, I've been contacted, since I saw the video where Marv is saying that that, if she had it combined, I've been talking with Tanya, but she hasn't had time to go look at what she did, and she doesn't believe it was combined on here. I mean, because if you go take off the six thirty-two off of there, like say you would take six thirty-two off of what I made, Jen would make more than me. It doesn't make any sense that that would be combined on there, but she hasn't had time, since it was such short notice. I didn't know this meeting was going to happen. She hasn't had time to go look, but if you take six thirty-two off of the twenty, twenty-nine seventy-eight, Jen would make more than me. You know what I mean?
What do you mean by the six thirty-two off the twenty-nine? I don't even.
Okay, he's saying that right now that that's combined on there, like the six thirty-two is combined with the twenty-nine thirty.
No, no, ma'am, I am not.
Well, yes, you are, because you're saying that I'm at step thirteen. So if I'm at step thirteen, you're saying that
I combined both of those together, and that's where I saw what step you're at. No, you do not take that off. That needs to be included.
Right, so you're saying it's included in there.
It's not included in the twenty-nine, no.
I think you're, we have a disconnect, but I understand where you're both coming from. So when you combine the wage, it shows that it's way up in the thing, which when it's combined, yes, it is. But what Cindy is saying is if she didn't have that land use, her twenty-nine seventy-eight would be lower than Jen's base currently, or?
Combining the twenty, if you're combining my whole wage to get me up to step sixteen, I'm not at, if you're combining my P and Z wage and my land use wage to get me up to step sixteen, you have to, you have to add that into that. You can't. Okay, what I'm saying is, you cannot add both of my wages to get me up to step sixteen, because that's not in that.
Steady.
That's not in that job description. That job description is only for tax director, not tax director and land use.
Okay, I think we're going two different paths here.
Like Sam's is for auditor slash HR. That's for both of her job descriptions. Carmen, Carmen's is for nine-one-one slash emergency manager.
And that's, we're discussing about combining yours.
I know, but he's saying that I'm at step sixteen, because I have two wages. You can't put that.
But Tammy never calculated that.
Put both of my wages and put me at step sixteen, when both of my wages aren't in that.
She just calculated as a tax director.
Yeah. I.
Okay, but Tanya doesn't, didn't use that on the wage scale for both of my.
Did Tanya just go by the analysis of what the
Tax Director.
Tractors around the state, which they have already combined those positions.
Not for, not, not for twenty sixteen, she put it up.
I would have to go back and research the.
And so did she, so I haven't gotten the answer from her, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so the jest of this, everyone slow down a minute here. The jest of this is you're getting paid as a tax director and a land use administrator. And we're gonna, the objective here is to combine the two. And we take the two wages, we combine the two wages, you're getting seventy-five thousand dollars a year.
Right.
All right. So now, if we combine the two and pay you the seventy-five thousand a year, then that additional, whichever one it was, the land use was not paying into PERS, you'll get seventy-five thousand, we'll get paid into PERS.
Right.
Is that where we're at?
That's where we're at if we don't. Yeah, if all we do is combine the two wages into one single wage, we would pay retirement on the entire wage.
Is that the objective here?
Right.
Okay.
First that you have to do it. I have an email saying that you should have been doing it the whole time, first.
Okay. So do you have, I don't know, I guess we can address Cindy. Cindy, do you have an objection to that basic?
No, I don't.
Okay. Does anyone on the commission have, I'm, I'm not trying to overstep.
No, no, I get where you're going, Gene.
I'm not trying to overstep our chairman's seat here, but then I'm asking, is the commission okay with that?
And I think, and we'll have to do a motion, but I think the consensus is that we're in agreement with that. And then that would correct where we're at now.
Right.
And then on a separate topic, total compensation when it comes to budget, we can talk about that at budget, but this would correct the inaccuracy that's currently in place.
Okay. Yeah, I know.
And.
That's that discussion about the steps and stuff, I care, but that's not relevant, so to speak, of what we're trying to, our objective here.
Yeah, the first objective is to correct what we had been doing in the past. And like I, like I stated, it wasn't illegal, it's just kind of confusing and convoluted and
Yep.
Andy PERS doesn't necessarily agree with it either. But if we correct it into one standard wage, we've corrected that first issue, and everything would be entitled to retirement compensation.
Yep.
And then as we move forward, we can, we can talk about other things, but so if we correct this on the land use and the tax director, then we also should look at the building maintenance.
Can we do that one?
We'll do that one separate, yeah.
If it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, yeah. Risk management and building maintenance is also on the agenda.
If it's okay with the chairman, I'd like to keep the two separate for separate discussions.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, well, it sounds like Cindy would not be unopposed to combining the two and combining the the salary and the, or the two salaries, I guess they're salaries, because land use is ten ninety-five, you're not getting an hourly pay for that. But, but you are getting an hourly pay for tax director, correct? But that comes out to that. And I'm not, I'm just going to round numbers. To that sixty-one thousand nine thirty-six. So we combine the two, divide it out, it comes to whatever our auditor, she can do the math, and whatever the exact hourly number comes out to, that's what she would get paid an hour. Yes? Am I on track?
You're on track.
Okay.
Your train is going the right direction. So with that, is there, is there a motion to combine the hourly, or the wages into a single hourly wage? Of thirty-six, ten is what it would currently come out to.
Approximate. Can we do that? Or is it, or is that the exact number?
Well, if you do thirty-six, ten.
It does come out to thirty-six, ten, because, okay, because if we put that in motion, that's what it's going to be.
What is the date?
Okay.
Twenty-fourth, and we'd have to, because you do a monthly payroll.
Right.
So it'd either be effective for the month of August, or starting September first, right?
Well, hey, Nate, yeah, so we had a.
We can make it effective.
We can make it effective now to put it on this.
This payroll, okay.
We can make it effective September first, or we can make it effective October, August first.
Right.
That's. However you, whatever you feel, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking for a motion, and you have to state when it would become effective.
I move we combine tax director and land use administrator to a single position with an approximate hourly wage of thirty-six dollars and ten cents effective September one, twenty, twenty-two.
Okay. Motion by Marv to combine the positions to hourly rate.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
I move to combine tax director and land use administrator for some time here to a single position with pay of approximately thirty-six dollars and ten cents per hour effective nine-one, twenty, twenty-two.
Okay. Motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Gene.
Have discussion.
Yeah, any discussion? Any discussion?
Can I ask the affected person, or is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Okay. Now let's talk building maintenance and risk management. So what's the, what's the base, so I'm assuming building maintenance is the base duty?
Correct, that's hourly.
Okay.
Okay, what's? What's the hourly?
So is it sixty-three? Thousand three hundred.
So Jim is at sixty-three, three seventy-six, sixty.
Sixty.
For his building maintenance. And then he makes seven eighty-eight ninety-nine for his.
Per month. Eighty-eight ninety-nine.
How much?
Risk management. It's twenty-eight forty-two per hour.
Correct, twenty-eight forty-two per hour for.
But if you do the sixty-three, there's a hundred dollars overtime.
That's, that's true.
Okay, so twenty-eight forty-two per hour for building maintenance.
Okay.
Seven eighty-eight point.
Nine nine.
Seven eighty-nine.
Seven eighty.
Seven eighty-nine?
How often? Seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and and what cents?
Nine, yeah, I'm sorry. It's nine thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Sixty-seven eighty-eight.
Nine thousand four hundred and sixty-seven and eighty-eight.
Okay.
Annually.
Annually, yep.
Divide that by twenty eighty. It's four dollars and fifty-five cents an hour. Add those two together, goes out to thirty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents an hour.
So if we combined it right now, the equivalent hourly rate would be thirty-two ninety-seven. Okay.
For just, for just a question, I kind of like what I've heard other counties, do we want to combine it and give it one title, or do we want to do building maintenance slash risk management? I'd like to see both of them as in the title. What do you think, Samantha?
I, I don't see.
Because you've talked to other auditors, that's why I'm asking you.
I only talk to other auditors about the land use and the tax director. I'm not sure what they do for the building maintenance or risk management. So, but I mean, I don't, it's not, I don't have a preference. He's going to be holding both, you know?
They're probably separate job duties, but he'd be listed as both.
Right.
Yeah.
We could, is there any issues saying building maintenance slash risk management?
I don't think so.
No.
I mean, make the job description title anything, yes, sir. Go ahead now.
Go ahead, Jim.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Just to be clear, I'm not going to have two time sheets, just one time sheet for both jobs, right?
Correct.
Because that's impossible to.
For both responsibilities.
A lot of times I do both at the same time.
Yep.
Yes.
And that's the same for Cindy's spot, is they're so intertwined together that it just makes sense to do one time sheet.
Okay.
And all hours worked would be at that rate, regardless of duty, because it's essentially.
One or the other.
Can I?
Yeah.
Just, just to interrupt Travis for a second. We, I agree with Travis, but it comes down, we would have to ask our auditor if that, if it can be done that way, because for record keeping purposes, does she have to keep them separate?
I don't think we keep it, we don't.
No, we haven't been doing.
Okay. Yeah, for, for, for any auditing that we would, like if you get audited, does his, do their, what the time we would spend on risk management have to be separated out?
No, we haven't.
Okay, okay.
That's a good question.
So.
But yeah, there's no, there's no formal auditing or any type of reporting requirements on, on their duties. They're essentially an administrative pay that we pay the employees, and there's no.
Okay.
There's, I mean, if we were in a consulting world and we were charging for his time, completely different, but on a county level, no.
That's sort of what I was alluding to, where there are times when it has to be, okay.
So the combined hourly rate would be thirty-two ninety-seven as we have figured currently.
Ready?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman and Board, I move we combine building maintenance and risk management She's ready. To a single position titled building maintenance slash risk management with a pay of about thirty-two point nine seven per hour effective nine-one, twenty, twenty-two.
Okay. Motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second by Gene. Any discussion?
Need to say for discussion.
Yeah.
It's just second.
Right.
You want to ask the same question?
Yes.
Okay.
Do it. Good deal.
Are you, are you reading my mind?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, is that acceptable to our building maintenance slash risk management person? Are you okay with that?
Yes, as long as it all goes to our purse, that's.
Yeah, that's, it will now, because.
Just to make sure that that is gonna follow whatever rule they have, that I don't even know what's out there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should. I can only ask a commissioner answer, it should.
That's our intention.
That, that was the intention of all this.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. And we thank you guys for bringing it to our attention. I know it was a long road, but we made it. Okay. Moving on to our agenda, budget valuation, including homestead credit. I think this is purely informational.
Yes, just informational. I did clarify with Linda that we aren't to use the growth value, because the homestead credit revenue is the state's portion, and then our value obviously will be included in our portion. So the fifty-fifty, state pays fifty, we pay fifty, so that shows the revenue from homestead credit for us and for the state unincluding revenues of mine, so it is the total. Which that letter is your confirmation that I printed off the last meeting from the tax director.
Okay.
State tax director.
So we include that in the mill calculation, and we also show it in the revenue.
Correct.
Okay.
And but also after putting in the central, our centrally assessed values, it changed our county or our unorganized, so that changed our mill to seventeen point ninety-nine. Which is still under the eighteen, but I
Okay.
Want to make sure that you guys know that it did make that adjustment after it was all put into
Which, which levy was that?
Unorganized.
Yep, okay.
And you're sending out revised budget sheets to everybody?
Yes. And then hopefully they get some form of.
You can just email me mine. You don't have to. I'll print it off.
What's on our agenda for next meeting?
I have to take a break.
Go ahead.
Take ten?
Well, I was just gonna say, that's probably what con- Well, I was just gonna say, that's probably would conclude our meeting, and if we have informational afterwards, it wouldn't be part of a actual meeting, so we'll adjourn the special meeting. There's really nothing to come back to. That's fine.